June 14th Village Board Meeting together at 6:32. Could you all please rise for the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance. The United States of America and to everybody who is standing one nation under your eye, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, roll call please.
Trustee Blue?
Yes.
Trustee Gray?
Here.
Trustee Holston?
Present.
Trustee Horn?
Here.
Trustee Raisin?
Present.
Trustee Benson?
Here.
Okay, I'm gonna just change the agenda slightly. We have an officer, Matt Hoekstra, we'd like to appoint. So, if you don't mind now, Matt, could you please come forward? Denisea, would you please swear him in?
You want to walk through there?
Sure. Wish we had an order for you, Denisea. You have to walk around. You want to take pictures, you want to stand up, move closer, whatever you want to do, make yourself comfortable.
If you can, I'm gonna say I am. I?
Happy Hoekstra.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
The United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of Illinois. And that I will.
And that I will faithfully discharge. Faithfully discharge.
The duties as police officer.
Duties as police officer.
For the village's money.
For the village's money.
To the justice of my bill.
To the justice of my bill.
Glad to have you aboard, Matt. At this point, open to the public, agenda items only. If you have any comments to make, please come forward. Okay, I'll go then right to the consent agenda. I need a motion in a second to approve the consent agenda.
I'll entertain that motion.
It's a second. A second please? No?
We have someone who'd like to withdraw.
Sorry?
E5 and E6.
There's no second.
E5 and E6 before the motion's passed.
What was on? What?
Five and six.
Oh, five and six you want to pull?
Yes.
Okay.
I'll second the motion with that understanding.
All right. All those in favor? Ah, fall here, I go. We're leaving again.
Trustee Gray?
Yes.
Trustee Holston?
Yes.
Trustee Horn?
Uh, yes.
Trustee Raisin?
Yes.
Trustee Benson?
Yes.
And Trustee Blue?
Yes.
Okay, our next item on the agenda is the clerk's report.
We have to go back and talk about those two items, Your Honor.
You want to go into executive session at this time?
No, we can talk about it publicly.
Why not?
Yeah, we have to do it now.
Why not? All right, I need a motion to... Yes. I know he does. Yes. Out here. Oh, we're not going into executive session. Okay, so five and six is open for discussion.
Okay, E5 and E6 I want to talk about first. That is the normal warrants and bills. There is some charges there. Help me, I do got there. On page three, first Midwest Bank. Three of those charges are pro services, around $3,000. That was for this trophy. At the last meeting that the mayor, previous mayor was at, if you remember, he spent a substantial time passing out plaques and making speeches and did that also at, I understand, some other meetings. He spent around $3,000 of the village money without approval to award these plaques. Although it's a nice gesture, it's a lot of money that the village, people of the village of Moni had to pay. In addition to that, jackets were paid for and other clothing paid for at the end. All of this happened after the election of '44. I believe this was out of order. The credit cards were used. There was no recourse. We were not aware of it. And we can't really do anything about it now. This has Ma'inee on it, so it really has no value. The only thing I can do is what I'm going to do, which I'm going to turn it back to the village. Because I think it's inappropriate for it to have been done. And it's a shame that the people of Moni had to pay $3,000 for these plaques in addition to the probably other several thousand dollars, I believe, Trustee Blue, you've done some work with this with me, that were used for other things as well. So with that, I have no objection to paying this, but I wanted to point this out, that this was done inappropriately. In the previous administration, it will be in this year. I think Darrell's gonna get it pushed to next, last year's budget though, aren't you, Darrell?
Yes, correct, yes.
So I've asked Darrell to make sure this gets put into last year's budget as a charge at that point, along with the next item. The next item is around $20,000 on E5. It is, I believe, five different checks that were passed out as compensatory pay to exempt employees of the village. Again, this was done on April 28th. In this particular case, the checks have already been issued and signed, so the checks have been cashed, I'm assuming. This was done without village approval. This was done without the board being polled. I'm not aware that anybody on this board was aware of that when it happened. That is attorney, I believe, against the village policy.
Yes, sir.
We can and should discuss this in executive session as to what action the village should take, disciplinary action if any, but the actual payment of the invoices, if we don't approve this, then we would be required to try to recover the money, and I don't think that would be fair to the employees involved. I don't hold them responsible for what happened here as a general statement, but I do think that this type of payment is a very bad precedent and should not have happened. The checks should not have been signed. The village board should have been approved, should have made aware of this, and we should have taken corrective action or made the decision at that point that we're going to do it.
Okay, Trustee Hol... Anyone else have any comments about this?
Yes, sir, I do.
Go right ahead.
On E5, on the compensatory payments, I have some questions. So, do we normally pay hours for comp time, or do people normally just take it as time off?
Generally speaking, those compensatory amounts due there were to salaried individuals, and under salaried individuals are, you know, some duties that may take them outside of their normal business hours, you know, for whatever purposes, attending this board meeting and other meetings that may be required as a part of their duties. And generally is not compensatory time under normal conditions.
So, under normal conditions, they wouldn't get compensatory time and therefore would not get paid in lieu of that?
In addition to their salary, that you're correct, they would not get paid additionally.
Is, to your knowledge, and I know this is new administration for you, but to your knowledge, has this ever been paid by the village?
I can't answer that. Yeah, I don't have any knowledge of that.
Okay, thank you very much.
You bet.
As mayor, we have other trustees that are aware of that situation. David, would you so thoroughly dug into you and Janet, and I appreciate that as mayor. And I appreciate you bringing it out to the public in a very professional way. And you did mention that we're gonna go into executive session and talk about other monies. So...
Mayor Pop?
Yes, sir.
I also concur. This was sneaky. I don't want to be involved with something that is behind closed doors. I just want to also be known that I am returning the gift that we're given. Just, and again, I appreciate Trustee Holston looking into this. I've heard him and I, sorry, have discussed this part myself, administrator today too, so. And again, for the folks out there in the village, we are looking into things. We want everything to be right. We don't want anybody to think that the village is trying to scam anybody. We are here for the village. And we want to be sure that we get elected to do the right things.
Thank you very much, Trustee Gray.
Mayor Pop?
I know other... Yes. Mary Jo. Trustee Vincent.
I just want to say that as a former employee of the village and a salary department head, I did not get any comp time to be. We were told at the end of the year and we would use it or lose it, so it was not political. So I just want everybody to know, for me to be on record, I would never get a comp time.
Well, again, this comp time is not for vacation, it was not for sick time. This comp time was for time outside the regular hours before you are out of the public. It had nothing to do with the normal, what you would expect, comp time being sick time or vacation in the future.
The largest point is we have no idea. We know anything.
And for the record, that was the sector of day 48. And I say this, they were not on the agenda, and they were signed on 4/48. Now, that being the case, I think we do have to go ahead and approve these because the bills still need to be paid, so I'll make the motion to be approved for five and six.
You know, second to that?
I'll say it.
With discussion wise, I want to say I must confuse David in respect that we're going into executive session about parts of this, okay? That's why I'm putting, going into the executive session the first time we do this. Okay, moving on. Roll call on the motion, please.
Trustee Holston?
Yes.
Trustee Horn?
Yes.
Trustee Raisin?
Yes.
Trustee Benson?
Yes.
Trustee Blue?
No.
Trustee Gray?
Yes.
Okay, we move on to clerk's report.
Okay, I just wanted to share that I received an email that I was supposed to share in close to acting residence of the village policy, which I will also share and post on the community website as well, from the South Suburban Mayor and Premiers and Managers Association. They sent a special code for six Black Great American tickets for days of July 17th and 18th, or July 1st, the fourth, the holiday, and it's saving over 50 percent. So you only pay $37. I thought I'd put that out there, except for, you know, I wanted to do something with the kids and the family. And it actually just says, I want to post that it'll have exactly how people are purchasing them and receive a discount. And secondly, I wanted to mention, because on Saturday, June 3rd, my fellow, several of the village board trustees and the mayor attended an elected officials workshop, and there was a special part about the ability for the officials to be able to call in doing, you know, remotely for board meetings, even executive session, but only for a few circumstances. And with that, that was one of the elected officials was on a village business trip, was on a personal business trip, an application, or if the elected official has a medical reason. And in order for this to happen, an ordinance must be put in place to allow this. So I'm just mentioning this now for consideration for future events.
And I do notice that vehicle stickers were mentioned. Larry, were you gonna say something? Go ahead.
Thank you, Larry.
You gotta talk loud, Larry, it's network.
It's network. I did draft an ordinance about roughly here, but actually wasn't taken, so I will send it to Mr. Wallace. But it's a very popular ordinance now, certain situations where trustee can call in, they gotta give advance notice, they communicate, it's supposed to be for business purposes or they're sick, and then they have the ability, it's supposed to be $40, I was put in, hadn't done with.
Holston?
Thank you. End of report.
Okay, I just want to, since she had stickers on her report, I want to mention that we need to tweak the sticker situation a little bit. I don't like to surprise the trustees when I say that, but I just want to give you one example that we didn't take into account. Number one, the two-year sticker is used because it saves a lot of labor in the office. That's why we enacted it, it was a cost item. But we may have overlooked some things. One I'll point out to you is, you have a family where, okay, it's $25 if you're under 65 for each sticker. So you may have two cars. One person is 65, the other's not, so you would pay, you know, 10 plus 25, which would be 35. But we didn't take into account someone that, we have a birthday the next year, it'll be 65, and they're 64 at the time they're getting this sticker. We may want to look at that. That's one thing I bring up there. I think there may be other reasons, but we will be looking into the sticker situation and try to make some corrections that I feel may be necessary. I hope the trustees are comfortable with what I said. We may do nothing, okay? We all have up here an opinion, so we'll see what we can do with the end of economy. My report. Yes, sir. Sure, give it a try, Michelle, see if you can turn stuff. Real gentle. We are. Are we operating? It may take a little while. We'll go to the assign... I want to make assignments to the trustees.
Finance chairman will now be Trustee Holston. Building services trustee will be Trustee Horn. Public safety trustee will be Trustee Raisin. Trustee Raisin. The economic development trustee would be Trustee Blue. Public works would be Trustee Gray. Parks and Recs, obviously.
Mary Jo Vincent, trustee. Well, I did have one thing come to my desk a little late. Heidi Gonzalez brought some paperwork to me. If I can dig it out of here. Thank you always covering my back, Mr. Wallace, I love him very much, he's a guy that... Shut up, Mr. Wallace. This came from Heidi Gonzalez. Please consider this request for tag day at various village-wide locations on Saturday, June 24th, from 8 to 12. This tag day will benefit the American Cancer Society Relay for Life of Piattone Beacher, Crete, Moni, and Moni to be held the next month, July 22nd, at the Piattone Junior High School. Thank you for your time and consideration of this generous request. The tag is a certificate of insurance. As always, if you have any questions about this or any other, there are society matters, contact me and blah, blah, blah. I would like to have someone make a motion to approve this. It's a good, a good thing to do. I know the police chief, here's what I'm saying, and obviously he would be involved with the police department, chief coroner, so is there anyone who wants to discuss anything about it?
What's involved in tagging?
What's involved in tag day? Strictly standing at intersections, collecting money, they'll have some kind of a...
They're not tagging trees.
Sir?
They're not tagging trees.
Oh, no. No, no, no. Strictly probably holding a bucket or something, not collecting money for cancer research.
Mayor Pop?
Yes. Trustee...
President?
You gotta talk loud, Mary Jo. Our $100,000 speakers.
Park and Recreation has a tag day form that we would take this form from you, and then it would be filled out, and we'd give a copy to the police and also to Public Works. This way they know what corners. It also has like a list of do's and don'ts, like don't have kids out there without adult supervision. So I can take this and fill the form out and then pass it out.
Okay, if it's approved, I appreciate you.
Will we have it approved?
I don't think so. I think it'd be nice if we do.
I believe so.
Say a resolution or...
I'll make the motion.
Is there a resolution or...
Just a word of motion.
Just a word of motion.
I'll make the motion.
And a second, right, Gray?
Trustee Horn?
Oh, any other discussion?
I know that we, I've seen other groups out there on the streets doing tagging or collecting doctors, and we love it for more actions, so are they even wrong, or are we doing this for formality? I mean, I am for it, for it.
Well, we're doing it so they have permission to be out on the street.
Well, what I'm saying is that other groups do this as well, and they do not come before this order.
Sure do.
No, they...
If I may, we've talked about this last year, the year before, and they've gone in front of Parks and Recs because of this exact situation. As long as we know they're out there, Lions Club was out there, wasn't it, two weeks ago?
Right.
It's not a, if you want to call it technically a formality, as long as we know the village are gonna be out there, as Mary Jo, or Trustee Benson, sorry, has said, it comes in front of this Parks and Rec page, we're gonna be out there. It could be Moni's baseball, it could be Lions Club, it could be the Cub Scouts, as long as people wear that, throw out their tag net.
Okay, so previously, we would always do it until we got Parks and Recs to record.
I think one of the reasons too we did it was because there might not be a meeting in between when they come with a request and when they...
Correct.
Between Rock and Hard place. So as long as they gave us their certificate of insurance and we knew what corners and we knew that they were legit, they had to be a 501(c), they couldn't be just anybody with a plastic can. As long as we checked them out, it was...
Okay, in actuality, though, it didn't come from Public Works or Parks and Recs. Right now, we have it registered. And so, I mean, 24th is it? If the exact date, it should be on the board. Very good. Okay, thank you for your consideration of that. Yes, sir.
We made the motion already.
Yeah. Okay, roll call.
Trustee Horn?
Yes.
Trustee Raisin?
Yes.
Trustee Benson?
Yes.
Trustee Blue?
Yes.
Trustee Gray?
Yes.
Trustee Holston?
Yes.
Okay, I don't like putting things on the agenda myself. I think it's that if there's something I should have put out, it's very, it's not that complicated, I don't believe. I would like to see the trustees, constituents, between now and our next board meeting, with the thought of increasing the speed limit on Court Street back to 30, with the idea, I've talked with our Department of Public Works, it will not be a cost item, there will be signs when an event is going on that we reduce the speed to 25. We have the equipment to do that. So I just want you, the trustees, to consider this, talk with the people a little bit, they're hearing me now on the mic and on TV, give us some input on it, and possibly make a decision on that at our next meeting. I hope I never give you any more surprises. No guarantees, though. Okay, and that is the end of my report. And then, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple of items. A comment on the last request on to collect or tag day. Since it came up to this level and we do have it to be handled by Park and Rec, I would like permission to check with the attorney on the delegation of authority, just to be sure that we're okay on that, because they are entering into our parkway and things of that nature, so we'll check on that offline and get back with the trustees. For my report, I just wanted to mention that the governor's highway project at 25646, that's with Dr. Sheets, is, we've met a couple of different times in the last week or so. Everything is on schedule there. We're in our transitioning from the board at the last meeting approved the TIP redevelopment agreement. That is now moving forward over into the construction phase, what's needed there, and the transition is going smooth there. As a matter of fact, he's already contacted architect and the design drawings are in process. So that's good. I would like to report that we have terminated the contract with SafeBilt to be effective at the end of the month, as we are moving those services in-house. And SafeBilt, in my meetings with each of the employees and a conversation with their Illinois representative, is very cordial. I look for nothing but a smooth transition in that office, and I would personally, for the short time I've been here, like to thank them for their efforts and the manners in which they've handled themselves. It's been nothing but professional. Moving on, I would like to report that although there's a lot of big economic development that has gone on, you know, with TIP agreements and things of that nature, the general day-to-day operations continue, and I would call this with just the application for business licenses that go on in our community, and we've had an application for a sporting goods store that's to be located out west of I-57 at the Cockle property out there, Cockle Towing property. It is a proper zoning out there, and I believe the trustees have been made aware of that in my personal opinion, and by zoning wise, it couldn't really be in a better place, so just wanted to mention that, because things continue to move on, even though it may be a smaller scale. We appreciate that, and that is actually applied for by the FIDE group, who is returning to Moni after a two-year hiatus in another community, so we welcome them back and we look forward to their future endeavors here. And last on my notes here is, we received notice from AT&amp;T regarding the lease cancellation for singular lease on a cellular tower. That has to do with cellphone tower relays and so forth. We will be pulling it, this just came in, so we'll be pulling that lease, going over, making sure the fine points have been met, and that should conclude our business with AT&amp;T at that point. And, Mr. Mayor, that concludes my report.
Thank you very much. Okay, I feel we can still do the officials' reports, but you still are in charge of the past committee, so the public works.
Public Works is on vacation this week, so I have no report. I have no report tonight.
Building's business, trustee Gray, you're in his... Don't tell Super Cazelle I said that. Building Services?
No report there.
Thank you very much. Public Safety?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I got a couple things to report. Moni Police Department will be posting a sign in the police department parking lot advising citizens that the area is designated as a meetup spot. It is recommended that the lot be utilized for internet purchases as the area is under video surveillance. Hopefully utilization of the police parking lot will discourage internet-related thefts and other criminal activity. Moni Police Department will not be, will not respond to each meeting unless those involved call 911 for emergency assistance. Also, a notable increase in criminal investigations has led to an unexpected increase in overtime usage over the last three months. The investigator has needed staff assistance to assure prosecutors receive all the necessary components for arrest and conviction. Moni Police Department is sending subcontrol officers to investigative training in an effort to improve our responsibility. Also, construction zone efforts continue. Amazon area has been very, very busy. EMA has a system of traffic control issues in the area. End of report, please.
Thank you very much. Trustee Raisin. Economic Development?
Just one, just one report, Mayor. We heard today that Amazon have actually put their jobs for warehouse fulfillment, they're actually online now, so they're looking for about 2,000 of those. We did post the link, it's on our website. Our economic development director, Kevin Daly, put the link on our website, and I did share it on Facebook today, so that's very, very exciting.
End of this one.
Did I miss something? Goodness, ladies, we started out with... And then this, finance committee, started out with a, uh, new topic. Yes, sir. The finance committee is already formed because we do have budgets that have to be approved by the end of July. So, for the record, trustee Horn and trustee Blue will serve on the finance committee with me. A group of three. Uh, this is a format similar to what we had in the previous administration. We'll be meeting, uh, I've talked with both trustee Horn, trustee Blue right now. We're gonna start by meeting the Monday before the board meeting at 4 o'clock. Uh, so, our next meeting will be Monday, the 26th at 4 o'clock. If any of the trustees wish to attend, they're certainly welcome or if the public wishes to attend, certainly welcome. We're doing this to allow for, uh, staff to be available without necessary, uh, requiring overtime. I don't know whether we'll need to have, uh, Larry, you might help us whether we need to have a clerk there or not for the record-keeping.
I believe so. If you have three trustees, it's a, a quorum and you should have notes being taken or minutes by a clerk or deputy clerk.
So, we'll leave it up to the, uh, village clerk to figure out who's gonna be there. Uh, we'll either hear the deputy clerk there for that meeting. Uh, we will get an agenda posted, hopefully, but basically we're gonna be reviewing the budget. The village administrator and Darrell have been working on that budget. They're pretty close to a preliminary number now and, uh, we should have some numbers to review that night that we can then send over to the trustees for review on that Wednesday, uh, meeting. Any questions? Any report? Yes, sir. Parks and Recs, Mary Jo Vincent.
I just wanted to say that leaving the park is going to be this Friday. It's row one and the rainy day is sad.
End of report. Okay, a trust attorney's report.
Thank you, Your Honor. I got three items for the board's consideration. The first item is the prevailing wage ordinance. His ordinance has to be adopted by state law each and every year in June. Then thereafter, it's followed with a secretary of state and also published in the local newspaper. It's up for the board's review and consideration.
Should we make a motion?
Make a second. Any other discussion?
Yeah, I, I, um, would like to ask, have we actually seen this ordinance and discussed it? I've listened.
Pardon me?
Have we seen the ordinance? Have we discussed it here?
Uh, I believe I sent it over. It's a standard form ordinance, uh, indicating that all we do is adopting the wages set forth by the Department of Labor.
I see.
So, all we do is we set forth the standard pay for work to be done in public construction contracts and then we follow it with the secretary of state.
Thank you.
Can we have a motion in a second?
Yes.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Raisin?
Yes.
Trustee Benson?
Yes.
Trustee Blue?
Yes.
Trustee Gray?
Yes.
Trustee Holston?
Yes.
Trustee Horn?
Yes.
Thank you, Your Honor. And the ordinance number?
It's gonna be 1797.
Thank you, Your Honor. The next item, if the board recalls at the last special meeting, uh, about a week ago, we approved the hiring of Tesca Associates to do a feasibility study for proposed TIP number six. Uh, I believe the fee was roughly $12,000. By state statute, though, you do need an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute his proposal. Then, once the ordinance is adopted, we send it out to the taxing districts indicating that we hired, uh, Tesca to conduct a feasibility study. Uh, again, his, their proposed fee is roughly $12,000. They did submit a timetable. Ideally, we can get the TIP number six, if it qualifies, done by September 27th. The latest it could be is December 12th, but that, that's the best case scenario. But tonight, there is an ordinance to authorize the mayor to execute the feasibility study proposal by, submitted by Tesca and Associates.
I'll make the motion.
Second. Trustee Gray, second. Any other discussion on this? And this is, uh, TIP, is this correct?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I might say to the public, uh, we had some choices with this, but we decided to go with the speediest way we could get this into a TIP 'cause we had some pending people that may wanna do something in that TIP. And they weren't willing to wait if we, uh, tried to get it into TIP 5 and, uh, we believe, uh, some people in TIP 5 would have been very upset if we delayed that. So, this was the way to expedite it quickly and hopefully, uh, keep the people that wanna come in happy enough to continue to pursue TIP 6. Roll call.
Trustee Blue?
Yes.
Trustee Gray?
Yes.
Trustee Holston?
Yes.
Trustee Horn?
Yes.
Trustee Raisin?
Yes.
Trustee Benson?
Yes.
It'll be 1798.
Thank you, Your Honor. The, the last ordinance is an ordinance amending, ordinance number 1649 relative to the building department, uh, department commissioner. Uh, we changed the wording in respect, uh, designated that individual as commissioner. Uh, and also, we changed it to reflect that the commissioner will report to the village administrator as opposed to the, uh, building department supervisor. So, therefore, it's up for the board's review and consideration.
Discussion?
Maybe we should have a motion in a second, first, and then a discussion. I'll make the motion. Second, please.
Second.
Discussion? Can you tell me, either Larry or, uh, Mr. Mayor yourself, the difference between the title of building department manager versus, um...
Commissioner.
Commissioner? Is there a difference or is it just, uh, one of, um, just, just changing because he's changing who he's reporting to or who the person is reporting to? Does that change the title?
Trustee Horn, I'll do my best to explain that. Um, because we were using an outside company, manager was a more appropriate form for that. Because we are now bringing those services in-house, usually, because it will be a municipal employee, uh, usually those are, are either a commissioner, uh, something that would fill the lines of a department head who actually worked directly for the village. That's the best explanation I have for it.
Would it be more appropriate, I, I know the other directors, director of Public Works, director of Finance, would it be more appropriate to call this person, building department director? Or is that, is that six of one, half dozen of the other?
Um, it could be viewed that way. However, this, uh, the commissioner is also performing inspections. So, he is out there, he is a department head, but he is also performing inspections as he has, uh, the certifications to do so on the electrical side. So, that's, that's why, uh, he's been more commissioned as opposed to management or director.
Any other discussion? And a motion, please? We have a motion in a second. Roll call.
Trustee Blue?
Yes.
Trustee Gray?
Yes.
Trustee Holston?
Yes.
Trustee Horn?
Yes.
Trustee Raisin?
Yes.
And trustee Benson?
Yes.
Okay, we already have our ordinance number on there. We just rewritten it. 1649. Is that correct, Larry? I have to, we've got...
I have the new number on the menu.
Oh, okay, so, okay, we're good.
1799.
1799. All right. That's all I have, Your Honor. Is there any old business? Mr. Mayor, we had discussed previously, before you became mayor, the issue of the landlord ordinance. It was supposed to be taking effect at the same time that the permits were drawn out for the car vehicle permits. I was assured that that would happen, but I have not heard anything on that. I'm wondering where that is. I must say, I never directed our administrator or anyone to pursue that, David. That would be an error there. That was put on a books, uh, a year and a half ago and, uh, previous mayor had said that we would tie that in and introduce that at the same time that we did the licenses for the cars. And the building department was supposed to be administering that, so, now that we, uh, we will need to discuss that. It's so long ago. And we, new trustees, I think we should wait till the next meeting. We don't need to discuss it now, we need to implement it. It's already, it's already an ordinance. So, it was... You're saying it was not approved? It was approved and it just needed to be implemented. It never got implemented and we discussed it in several meetings this year and agreed that it would be implemented during the passing out of the stickers at the same time. So, you need a motion? No, we don't need a motion. We just need to make sure that the... Okay, David, we'll look into that and we'll get that completed. Okay, we're now, uh, other than, uh, that's old business, any new business? We have a couple items here.
Yeah, I just wanted to bring, uh, to the attention of the board and the public that, um, the Moni Alliance of Churches, uh, as a special project, um, coming out of, um, uh, Mr. Baptista's, Robert Baptista's office, um, they're working in cooperation with the village to put on, uh, what they're calling a Love Moni 2017 Day. It's a day of community service and I will give you much more information on that down the road. Um, it is, uh, there's some awesome projects involved in that. One of them is a community garden that we're working, that the Moni Alliance is working with, um, St. Paul's Church in the Village and, and other folks to get this community garden ready to plant in, uh, August. So, that's very exciting. Um, I just wanted to give you a heads up and hopefully, uh, we'll give you more detail on that.
Okay, okay. Any other new business? I have two items. The appointment of Scott Juris to the police commission. I believe you all had his resume in your mailbox and have the time to look at it. My personal opinion, he's well qualified. He's even excited about coming aboard if we approve him. He's very involved in the community. So, I'm looking for a motion to approve Scott Juris.
I'll make that motion.
To the police commission.
Second.
Second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Trustee Gray?
Yes.
Trustee Holston?
Yes.
Trustee Horn?
Yes.
Trustee Raisin?
Yes.
Trustee Benson?
Yes.
Trustee Blue?
Yes.
You do make me nervous sometimes.
That's why I'm here.
My hair's getting thinner.
It's getting gray too.
All right, and our next on the agenda is the appointment of Michael Johnson as the building commissioner. He also had his resume and, uh, most years have even talked with him. I, I will say that, uh, trustee Horn, he weren't left out of things for any reason at all. In fact, it was in your mailbox. So, you and I talked it quite late today and you've got a, a pretty good feel for who he is and, uh, his qualifications. So, uh, is there any discussion on this? If not, I'd like a motion to approve Michael Johnson as building commissioner.
I'll make the motion.
Gray?
Second.
Anthony Razak? Roll call, please.
Trustee Holston?
Yes.
Trustee Horn?
Yes.
Trustee Raisin?
Yes.
Trustee Benson?
Yes.
Trustee Blue?
Yes.
Trustee Gray?
Congratulations, Scott and Michael. Glad to have you aboard. At this time, uh, I'll give to the public non-agenda items. Just so you're not scolding me for fumbling around here occasionally.
I'm reading more of the Peetown Public Library District. I was pending I drew some...
Hit the button, dear, I think. Is there a button on that?
Oh, you did, yeah. Yeah, we turned on yours.
Oh, I'm sorry. My error. Is it on now?
I need a minute.
Try it. Go ahead.
What I'd like to do is do many things. I have a boat drop outside. I'd rather do it on premises than take, affect the library for obvious reasons. I just didn't talk to Michelle about a water source that I could use and if I can do it here, I just want to make sure that it's okay.
I'll tell you, we'll, we'll, uh, discuss that and get back to you, okay?
All right, thank you.
Anyone else? At this time, we've got a few matters to go through in executive session. It may be lengthy, so, uh, I'm gonna wish those that leave good night. Others, if you stay great, we're gonna go into executive session, I'd like a motion, please, to close the open meeting. Yes, Larry? Uh, executive session for personnel matters, compensation section. Any discussion on that, there shouldn't be?
A second.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Horn?
Yes.
Trustee Raisin? Trustee Benson?
Yes.
Trustee Blue?
Yes.
Trustee Gray?
Yes.
Trustee Holston?
Yes.
Okay, we're gonna move into executive session.